It is 7:01. So I'll call the meeting to order. Meeting of the Carver Select Board for Tuesday, May 5th, 2020. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, subsection 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Carver Select Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that individuals who would like to view or listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by watching us live, by tuning into Comcast Channel 15, our Area 58 government access channel. If despite our best efforts, we are not able to provide real-time access due to technical difficulties, a recording or other comprehensive record of these proceedings of the meeting will be made available online as soon as possible. And I guess, Rich, were you able to get a flag for the meeting?
Yes, we were.
All right, so if you could put that flag up, we'll all stand and pledge allegiance. Awesome.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, could you read the community prayer? Mr. Chair, before you do that, could I ask Alan to turn off his fan? Because it's one of those things, it's very dangerous. Some people in the audience, when they have that motion, can come up certain things to happen.
Okay. It's flagging down.
Thanks, Alan.
Selectmen, talk, the prayer?
Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we consider in our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community where we've been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, there is an echo.
I noticed that, I'm getting the echo as well. Rich, any thoughts on the echo?
Not really, it's probably just the feedback from someone else's speakers.
Okay.
Is that a little better? I took my phone off the speaker.
Ah.
Is that better?
Yeah. That is better.
Okay, I'll be on the phone then.
Okay, so I guess, Mr. Lafond, at this point, I'll turn the meeting over to you for the reorganization of the board.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Carver Chairman. I guess we'll keep this simple. Are there, can I hear any nominations, please, for Chair? And I'll take, go ahead, sorry.
That's all right, I nominate Mark Townsend as Chair.
Second? Well, I was gonna call for any other nominations, Mr. Clark, before I ask for seconds, but are there any other seconds? Hearing none?
Any other nominations?
I'm sorry?
You mean any other nominations?
Any other nominations for Chair, correct. Hearing none, we have a motion and a second for Mr. Townsend, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Townsend.
Well, thank you, it's an honor to be Chairman of this board. I appreciate the confidence you've shown in me. I guess at this point, I would call for nominations for Vice Chair.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion, given that this board will only be together a short while longer before we finally do get elections in, I would like to make a motion that we forego having a Vice Chair until the next election.
Is there a second? Hearing none.
I'll make a motion that we have Sarah Ewens as the Vice Chair.
Second?
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, all in favor of Sarah Ewens as Vice Chair?
Aye.
Aye.
Against?
Thank you.
Aye.
Sarah, congratulations, I'm not sure if we have a delay.
I appreciate that.
But anyway, at this point, we will move along to an update on public safety on COVID-19 from our EMS chief, Tom Walsh. Is Tom on the call?
Yes, I am, can everyone hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you for having me tonight to do this update. The last time we talked, and I gave an update, was in early April, and at that time, I thought we were in pretty good shape, we had a couple of needs that we hadn't addressed yet. I think that I'm gonna go through a lot of the same things, so as a review, so that everyone has a good feeling for what actions each department is taking. First of all, starting with our health agent, Kevin Fork is communicating very effectively with our public safety departments, excuse me, keeping us advised of COVID-19 patients' addresses in Carver. The public safety dispatchers are keeping a list of all COVID-19 patient addresses, so that responses of any nature, whether it's for a simple inspection, or whether it's for an emergency, the responders would be notified, so that appropriate precautions could be taken. The Visiting Nurses Association continues to contact positive COVID-19 patients with advice on isolation, and both verbally and the telephone, as well as in writing, and obtains contact tracing information, and then contacts people that the patient has been in close contact with, and advises them on appropriate quarantine measures. And periodically, the visiting nurses are also checking in with the patients. The Board of Health established a mandatory mask policy on April 27th, and I believe the state has now done the same thing. The health agent reports that they have applied for and received a $12,000 grant for COVID-19 expenses. The VNA has informed the Board of Health that they will continue to provide tracking services beyond July 1st, if necessary. We, the total number, right, has been, of patients, has been moving around a little bit today. Right now, the best count I can come up with is that there have been 26 positive diagnoses for COVID-19 in Carver. 12 are currently in isolation, 13 have recovered, and tragically, one was a fatality. Moving on to emergency medical services, all EMS staff is fully functional, and no department personnel have contracted, contacted, or contracted COVID-19. When COVID-19 positive patients, people we transport to the hospital, turn out to be positive for the disease, I'm contacted by the infection control officer from Beth Israel Deaconess Hospital, and we investigate the call, talk to the responders, searching for any positive, possible unprotected exposure. We have had one paramedic who's self-quarantined for 14 days for relatively minor exposure, and he has since returned to work, never developing any symptoms of COVID-19. The personal protective equipment we have in place within the EMS department is all we need. With, the emergency management department has kind of taken the lead on getting personal protective equipment in the form of masks, as well as gloves and gowns, goggles if necessary, and has made sure, basically, that police, fire, and EMS have all the PPE that they need. The police department reports that all of their protocols and procedures are in place and being well-followed, and that they're responding to all emergencies, however, they're doing what they can to minimize personal interaction, yet still get the job done. As I mentioned, Carver Public Safety Dispatch Center, which is fully operational, is also querying, besides having a list of addresses, they're also querying anyone who calls for any request for services, whether it be routine or of an emergency nature regarding any illness in the home, or anything that might cause them to alert responders or people going to the call to take appropriate protective measures. And currently, there are no members of the police department that are out of work due to the virus. Having each, the police chief reports that having each officer have their own cruiser has definitely been beneficial to keeping officers from sharing equipment and minimizing the need for them to congregate in the station. The station is sanitized, has been sanitized three times by Sir Pro at no cost to the town, and is presently scheduled to be sanitized every Thursday, and the town custodial staff is doing daily sanitations, as well as offices and dispatches are making sure things are wiped down and sanitized as much as possible as well. Police report that they are processing firearms license renewals by mail, and will soon begin to accept new applications by mail to start the process and complete it, once the stay-in-place advisory has been lifted. The Carver Fire Department is 100% in service and continues to respond to all emergencies within their discipline, all procedures and protocols are kept up-to-date consistently and on a constant basis. The Fire Dispatch Center also maintains the same list as the Public Safety Dispatch Center in the police station. And all stations have been professionally sanitized twice, and are being cleaned and sanitized on a regular basis by the custodial staff of the operations and maintenance department, who have also been doing a great job with all the departments in keeping us safe. The Fire Department continues to do fire inspections on a limited and emergency basis. As far as emergency management goes, as I said, taking the lead on making sure that all three, you know, EMS, police, and fire have the PPE they need, and at this point, that was a shortage when we talked in early April, now that's been addressed, and I feel we're in good shape for PPE. EMA is also monitoring the disaster recovery procedures, and has attended a webinar from FEMA on recovery procedures. So overall, all departments are working well together, all have the procedures and protocols in place to do the job, I can't think of anything that we're not doing, we should be doing, or anything we are doing that we shouldn't be doing, and I feel that the public, and you should be able to feel comfortable, that emergency services are fully prepared to handle what we have going for us, and take, handle anything else that comes our way. And that would be the end of it.
Thank you, Tom, questions on the board?
Thank you, Tom.
Yes, Tom, we feel extremely safe in your care and those of those other departments.
Thank you, Sarah.
Appreciate it.
Tom, please pass our thanks to the other chiefs, and if you talk to the Board of Health and the health agent, please thank them for all the hard work they've been doing.
I'll do that, Alan, thank you.
Ron, you have to unmute yourself. You're still muted.
I see your lips moving, Ron.
There you go.
I was just gonna say, if you or any of the other departments need any assistance, be sure to let us know, if there's anything we can do to assist you.
I'll do that, Ron.
Yeah, and saying here, Tom, anything the board can help with, please let us know, please thank, pass our thanks along to all the chiefs, the Board of Health, and we certainly appreciate all your hard work, and I know the town appreciates it as well, so thank you.
I appreciate those of you who check in with me periodically, and it's always good to hear from you, thank you very much.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
All right, moving along, we will move along to an election update. Kara Dayhill is here with us, and Kara, could you pass along what information you have from the state, and what your thoughts are on the best way for us to move forward when setting an election date here in Carver?
Sure, I'd love to. Well, I've been following, as the situation has been changing, and the state, of course, you know, has allowed us to do early voting, and they're really promoting early voting, and as you know, our local elections never really have a huge turnout, so if we can get enough people to early vote, it may make the election day run a little smoother. One of the things that I'd like to mention is, there is a moratorium, we have to have the election, the local election, by June 30th. So I know we've got a tentatively town meeting scheduled, is it the 9th? And I was thinking, yeah, if we could set a date, that would be great, because I have to change my election calendar in the state computer, and all these early ballots that are coming in, I have to keep up, keep up with that date to put them in, so once we have a hard, firm date, it would, it would make my life a lot easier. And I don't know about you guys, but I was considering either the 20th or the 27th, they're both Saturdays in June, those would work. One of the other things that they had mentioned were that they will allow, by select board vote, to reduce the hours of the local election, to kind of minimize the contact for our most precious election workers, they're the most at risk, so we'd like to try to minimize their exposure if we could. They recommend the minimum hours are four, I think we'd be comfortable with anywhere between four and six, especially if we have the early voting, we're getting in quite a few ballots for that, so I don't think we'll have the turnout that we normally would have, you know, physically at the election. So that's something to consider, and the only rule on that is that we start the election before noon time, which of course we would. That, and some ideas from some other towns, taping off the floor, to have, you know, tape places for people to stand, to keep safe distances, to kind of strategize and limit the amount of people that we allow in the door, kind of stagger them. We've got nice, big tables that we can, you know, have our election workers a couple feet away from, and have the voter be a couple feet away from those, we should be able to maintain, you know, six to 10 feet at all times. I plan on having help to come in and wipe down the voting booths, the pens, the tables in between, you know, voters, and that's, that's, that's pretty much it, that as long as we are still required to wear masks, that'll help too. But I see no reason why we can't go ahead and have an election, one of my clerk mentors just had one yesterday, and one of the things that the state allowed him to do were to, he had four precincts, and he was allowed to combine them down to one precinct, and then he had another ballot machine that he could just run his early ballots through, and he said it worked like a breeze, it was, it was the smoothest procedure he's ever done. So if we're not gonna have a huge turnout, that's another option, and that makes it easier to not have as many election personnel, and again, you know, reduces the risk to everyone.
So Kara, just a quick question, so a little while back, we did set sort of guidelines for the board, that we were going to try to have town, we're gonna try to have the election a week after town meeting, town meeting is technically set right now for June 9th, so if we wanted to have it on a Saturday, that would lead us to June 20th.
20th, correct.
Do you have a preference, whether we held the election on June 20th or June 27th?
No, I'm free both days. It'd be a little more work, but I'm sure, I'm sure it's nothing that we can't do, so we'd be happy to have it either day.
So the town clerk's office has no preference with one day over the other?
No, no preference, no preference, I've already rounded up the troops, and 90% of them are ready to go, so they're, they're, they're ready, they're excited for it.
Questions on the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Since there's no guarantee, we would be able to have a town meeting on June 9th, the way things are going, I think, at least I anyway, feel we'll be doing well, if we can get it in by the end of June. Also, I think, I think the citizens deserve the right to go ahead and have the election to have their representatives that they want to vote for, to vote, so I'd like to ask Kara, what's the earliest you could do in June? Could you do June 6th, or is 13th the earliest you could do?
I could do, I could do either, I've never done a town meeting, so I don't know what I have to do to prepare for that, but I'm sure, I'm sure we could do it, I'm sure I could get some help, and I could make anything happen, I'm pretty sure of that.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, given that, I would like to make a motion, I don't know if I'll get a second on it, but I think the sooner we have election, the better. I would like to make a motion that we move the town election be on June 6th, I'm not so worried about having the election before town meeting, because we always used to do it that way anyway, and where the exact date of town meeting is gonna be very uncertain, I'd like to get the election out of the waste for the citizens, so I make the motion that we have town election on June 6th.
I'll second for the purpose of discussion, but I did have a couple of questions.
Okay, Mr. Clark?
Yeah, Kara, I know that you had a couple of your employees furloughed, are you gonna be able to, are you gonna be able to have the staff to pull something off, or as quickly as June 6th?
I would hope and pray that I could bring them back if we had this, you know, in front of us, that would be my next thing that I would ask for, that, and of course, I have my wonderful mentor, Mrs. Parker, who I probably do need some help from, will minimize it, but I know that she's kind of essential to making sure that we get everything that we need, seeing how this would be my first local election and my first town meeting, I'd like to have her on board, and you know, it's, there's a lot of work to prepare, but it's not as bad as the state primary was, the local primary that we just did.
I've spoken of this a couple times, and I was gonna mention that later on, we need to discuss furloughs, but a number of department heads and I have had conversations, particularly finance, and Karen's, the town clerk's office, to really get a sense of what, what is really necessary, I know, now that there's some openings, I think there's more of an appreciation for which particular positions are more, I hate to use the word essential, but certainly more critical than others, at least during this particular time of year. Would you agree, Kara, that's essentially what we've discussed?
Oh, yeah, yeah, you were very good at talking about that earlier today, the state does consider this office essential, so yeah, it's gonna be tough for me to do it all on my own.
Right, right, so Kara and I, and obviously have committed to help her do that, we can't, we really, elections you don't screw around with.
Nope.
Mr. Chairman?
My point is, I'm okay with June 6th, as long as Kara feels that, I mean, that's a month away, essentially, today's the 6th, so we're talking basically about a month. In terms of the, would nine to three work for voting, would that, you be comfortable with that?
I think that would be, I think that would be fine, I think nine to three works wonderfully.
And what about, how do we go about getting, if we want to vote early, with the mail, we just send an email to the town clerk's office?
Well, there's instructions on the website, if you go to my page, there's, on the left-hand column, you'll see an option for early ballot application, also absentee applications. The state is being very liberal with the absentee now too, but for this particular election, there's a municipal application that you fill out, you would fill it out, make sure it's signed, and send it in, put it in the drop box, attention town clerk, or mail it, once I got it, then I process it, I put it into the state computer, and I mail out a ballot. Once that ballot returns, it's recorded once again into the state computer, so anyone that's afraid of early voting should not be, because we track it coming and going, it's a really great process, it's been very smooth.
If we're gonna have the election June 6th, how long's it take between the starting, voting by mail, versus getting it into you in time by June 6th, what sort of a window is there?
Well, you can actually early vote right up until election day, on election day, we're still taking those ballots in, so we've already been mailing ballots out, I've been receiving them back into the office already, it's an ongoing, it was advertised in the Carver Reporter, and I think Area 58 is gonna run a little thing across the TV for us on that, and we're hoping that maybe the fire chief said that he would also put it on the sign out front here, so that way, it's, you know, people are kind of paying attention to it, but for the public at large, that's, you know, nervous about coming out in a crowd, not that we'll have big crowds, but still, just coming out, it's a great way for allowing more people to vote, so I know they're gonna...
I think, as I look at it, Kara, I mean, we can set the date of June 6th and say nine to three, but in terms of the nitty-gritty and the getting into the weeds, I'd leave that to you, whatever you feel you need to do.
Okay, as long as I have hope, that's, that's, that's the big thing, I can't do it all by myself, but I sure would try.
Mr. Belvin?
Yeah, nothing on the agenda stated anything about a vote for town elections, so I think that we should hold off on this, I have no problem with the 6th, but voting on it, because it wasn't put out there as a vote on the agenda, just to protect ourselves?
Well, actually, Mr. Chairman, if I may say, above all the items, it does say the board chair reasonably anticipates the following matters will be discussed and/or voted on at this meeting, so...
Yeah, but in the actual items that we have, we put in what we're going to vote in, so...
Can I, can I suggest that, well, I mean, I, I think in the interest of, you know, technicalities, I think if we leave here tonight with a consensus that we're going with June 6th at our next meeting, we can formalize it, but I don't have a problem, Kara, if you just proceed with June 6th, we've got, on a technicality, we can't actually vote it, but I, if we are in agreement, if we're all in agreement, are you okay with June 6th, Bob?
I don't have a problem with whatever the town clerk wants.
Okay.
I have no problem with her putting a date out there and saying, this is what I can do, and I'm comfortable with that, but like I said, until we actually have it on the agenda as a voting article.
We could even, we could even call for, Mr. Chairman, you could even call for a quick Zoom meeting for this purpose, you know, within the proper 48-hour warning this week, if we wanted to.
We could, Mr. Lafond, is there, is there a legal issue where we have to vote the date before we can, before Kara can technically set the date?
Well, I think, Kara, you actually, you need to deal with ballots, and those are important in terms of dates, so I would think that it's best for you to have that vote before she does and goes ahead with that, because there's a lot of, I think, a lot of technicalities, then she has to work with this commonwealth of Massachusetts, so there's a lot of players involved, so I, I think I would, I think Bob's concern and Ron's suggestion makes sense in this case.
Is there a certain number of dates?
Maybe Friday morning?
Is there a certain number of days we have to take the vote before the election can happen?
Yes, you have to have your warrant, the town warrant has to change, because we are going to change the hours of the election, and we have to put a date on it, that goes up a week before, my ballots are already printed, the state was very gracious, because, you know, none of us expected this, and we had already ordered ballots, we're allowed to use the ballots that we would have used in April, they're, they're allowing that, so that's, that's, everything is just about ready to go, I even have the cards for the machines, so it's just a matter of rounding up the troops.
If I do a quick count, and I could be wrong, because I only did it quickly while we were here meeting, I count 32 days between today and June 6th. I count 32 days between today and June 6th. So I guess my question is, is there a certain number of days that we have to post that the election, that we have to take a vote for that election to happen? We want to make sure we comply with that.
Yeah, there's, there's no, I, I feel well within the, uh, within a timeframe. I think it's just a matter of planning purposes. And as Kara said, so, you know, it has to be posted, the election warrant has to be posted, but that, that's all.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd suggest maybe you try to call a meeting for Friday morning and, and then in between then, we can double check dot i's and cross t's for legalities. Uh, and we can have a meeting just for this purpose.
I think that's a good idea. Um, is there anyone that could not make a meeting Friday morning if we had one?
I'm good.
Okay. All right, I'll work, um, Elaine, perhaps you could, you could post a meeting for, um, would, would nine o'clock Friday morning, would that work for everybody? Would 10 o'clock be better?
I was going to say six, but nine's okay.
Very funny.
That, that work for everybody if we do say nine o'clock Friday morning?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. Elaine, if you could post that, that would be great. And Kara, we'll, so we'll work on that. And so just, you feel comfortable with June 6th? Do you feel comfortable that your office is, is prepared?
We, we, we should be, that, that gives us just about a month of, um, people able to, you know, obtain ballots and, uh, if they want to early vote, that gives them some time. So we just really have to promote that now, um, for those that don't feel comfortable coming out. But, um, you know, if we can all go...
The distancing and everything, you feel comfortable that June 6th is a date that you can work with?
Yep, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start tomorrow. I'll work with our guys here to make sure we have everything we need at the school. Um, by reducing the hours, it shouldn't be as much set up for food or, you know, refreshments. We shouldn't have to plan, you know, breakfast, lunch and dinner. We should be able to have a snack and get through that. But, um, that, and just making sure that the, you know, body of my election workers, the number that I need, um, will be available at that, on that date. I had tentatively said probably the 20th or the 27th, so I'm sure everybody will be surprised when we, uh, say that we're, we're going to go a little earlier. But, um, if the state allows me to, um, use one machine and, and run one precinct, all three precincts through one machine, then we won't need as many election workers either. And that'll be, you know, less risk too, so...
And, and you'll have time to check all those things before our Friday meeting? So if that's an issue, then we could...
Yep, I'm gonna work on that tomorrow. I'm gonna, I'm gonna start.
So, um, the only thing we'll need to receive is the revised election warrant?
Yep, mhm, yep. What were the hours that you guys had mentioned? Was it, um, nine to four, did you say, or nine to three?
Nine to three, I believe.
Nine to three, okay, because that, that language will have to go in it and, um, I can change that. And then I'll get it to you Elaine and then we'll, um, disperse it and get it posted everywhere. As many public places as we can find that people can still go.
And I'll tell Kara to, uh, uh, on whatever staffing she feels she needs to, to get to that point. I don't want to leave her out there.
Thank you.
Does anyone have anything else for Kara?
Thank you very much for all you're doing Kara.
Don't leave.
Oh, thank you guys, thank you.
Good luck, let us all be even.
All right. Thank you Kara, enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you so much. Thank you, you as well, take care.
Wait a minute, don't go Kara.
Hang on Kara.
Okay.
Doesn't she need to sit, to witness our vote for the next, the next item?
Um, I don't know, Mr. Lafond, does she need to witness our vote for the next item?
Uh, that's, that, I don't believe so. Why would that be, uh, Sarah, I'm not sure.
I don't know. I was thinking of us signing it, but we can't sign it tonight, so, never mind.
I guess, I guess there's no, uh, I guess there's no harm Kara, if you, if you could stay on, online for another five minutes, that...
I don't mind, no, I'm here, I don't mind. No, I'm fine.
Better safe than sorry, so, uh, moving on. Uh, our next item on our agenda is the revote of the interim town administrator contract. Uh, as I think you all know, we received an open meeting law complaint, uh, that we didn't post the vote on the town administrator contract, uh, 48 hours in advance. After talking to town council, we thought it might be better, uh, out of an abundance of caution, to just take a revote tonight and, and make sure there were no issues. So, uh, that's why this item's on the agenda. So with that being said, uh, discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the contract, uh, as interim town administrator for Rick Lafond.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like this to be a roll call vote please.
Absolutely, it should be a roll call vote, agreed. Uh, Mr. Belvin?
Yes, um, so this firm, uh, open meeting law complaint, um, and is town council, they're going to review this? I mean, to be honest, we were kind of under the gun for this, um, process from getting from, uh, an interim town administrator, um, process, knowing that Mike was leaving. And, um, I mean...
We were, town council is going to review it. We just felt, out of, again, out of an abundance of caution, to just revoke the contract, just, just, just to be safe. So it just seemed to make sense.
Okay, and, um, yeah, I just feel that, um, people need to understand that there was a short timeframe from when we first started the process and then coming to, uh, uh, terms of, uh, who we're going to pick and then going to negotiations and then Michael leaving at 18, on the 18th. So, um, there, there was a timeframe on that. Um, and I just want the public to understand that.
And I, I, I think the day he left was actually the 17th, which is why we, we wanted that vote.
It was. And, and Mr. Chair, if I could just ask, um, could we, throughout that, if it's not too much trouble, I think it would help go a long way towards, um, resolving some issues if, if the interim town administrator could be called interim town administrator throughout the document, unless, unless we can do something at the beginning where we say that TA is, in this case, short for interim TA.
Well, I believe the title of the...
Then maybe we could correct the signature page as well.
Yeah, I, I believe the title of the contract was, uh, uh, the contract between the town of Carver and the interim town administrator.
It was, it was. I just thought I'd bring it up.
No, I, I agree. I, I don't know, I, I guess the question is, I don't know whether correcting that language throughout the contract would result in, uh, an altered contract that would require another vote. I, I don't know that. Certainly, I think the signature page should be corrected and I would agree with you there. Um...
No, I'm good with that.
Okay, okay.
I mean, you can double check that with council, Mr. Chairman.
I will double check that. So I believe we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
A roll call.
Roll call vote, I'm sorry. Uh, Sarah Hewens?
Sarah Hewens says aye.
Mr. Belvin?
Mr. Belvin says no.
Ron Clark?
Ron Clark says aye.
Alan Dunham?
Alan Dunham says aye.
And Mark Townsend says aye, four to one. All right, thank you Kara. Sorry to, sorry to keep going a few minutes.
Oh no, that's okay, it's nice and quiet here. Thank you so much, have a good night everyone, take care, bye-bye, bye.
Our next article on the agenda is to review and revoke the town meeting warrant, uh, budget article. And I think, uh, Article 5, Part A and Part B is what we need to address.
Chairman?
Yes?
I make a motion that we, uh, approve the, uh, town meeting warrant budget article.
Sarah, second?
Um, do you want to specify which article, Ron?
Well, it's the whole budget, but the art, the budget article.
No, it's, we're being asked to vote on Article 5, Part A, Number 1. Remember we voted on the, all the different parts separately?
Yeah. I believe it's Part A then Part B.
We've already voted the budget. There were two changes. One, added more money in the town administrators', uh, line item and the other removed the community living portion. So all we're doing is approving the original budget with those changes.
That's, that's correct, yes.
Uh, will you, uh, what, I think what's, sorry, go ahead Sarah.
Well, I, and maybe this is what you were going to say Elaine, when we voted it, we voted it in separate parts. So that, that community, that appendix E is part of the organizational chart. And we did not all agree with the organizational chart. So to just approve the whole thing...
Well, but it, those have been removed in the budget that we have in front of us now. So by voting this budget, we're essentially getting rid of the community living and including the money in the town administrator line item.
Correct.
So that it, it, that's what we're voting, is the budget that was sent out that we looked at.
Right, but there were more parts of that whole article that I, for one, and I, I don't know about Bob, but I know I voted against as well.
Well, this is appendix E, maybe that makes it, uh, is that, am I correct, uh, Elaine? This is appendix E?
You are both correct.
That doesn't help Elaine.
So Sarah, so there's an appendix A that you voted separately on, which had originally included the Department of Community, Community Living and that has been removed. And then appendix E updated the budget totals. So if you could re-vote both of those, that would be great. Because that's how you originally voted on them.
Okay.
So, Mr. Clark, would you like to amend your motion to just address the, address the first one and then we'll go?
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve, was it Article A Elaine?
Uh, Article 5, Part A 1.
Number 1.
5, Part A 1, uh, which removes the community living portion of the reorganization.
Second.
Is, I just want to make this clear, is, is this part of the chart that we were given, that we're voting on now, or is it the budget itself?
This, this is the reorganizational chart, which has an impact on the budget when you take the community living out.
But it's not, this is not the part that does the wages and, and the classification Bob? This is just the...
Right.
Yeah, this is just appendix A, correct Elaine?
Right.
That's just the chart.
Appendix E.
No, uh, right now you're on Part A 1, which is appendix A. Appendix...
Right now we're recognizing that we've remu, removed the community living reorganization as part of that appendix 5A 1.
Right.
Did we get a cop, did we get a copy of this revised one yet, to us?
I think Michael, I think Michael sent that out to us before he left.
Yes.
Elaine, is this the organizational chart in total?
Yeah.
The one you were sent by Michael?
Yeah, it was in the packet.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
The one we're voting on now, is it, is it the entire org chart?
Yes.
Okay, so I withdraw my second.
I'll go ahead in a second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, uh, discussion? Seeing none, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Uh, so three to two. So now we'll move on to Article 5, Part B, which is...
E.
E, I'm sorry. Uh, which is the...
No, you want Part B.
Oh, okay.
And that is the operational budget, operating budget, correct?
Right, and that is, this is what's reflected in appendix E is this section.
Mr. Chairman, I move we vote to approve, uh, Article 5, Section B.
Second.
Discussion?
So I just want to be clear, Mr. Chair, is this, um, are we voting on this again because this includes the, um, funding for Mr. Lafond's position?
Uh, I believe that's the change that was made, am I correct Elaine?
Right, okay.
Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. All right, uh, let's see, our next item, we need to appoint three members of the select board for the Old Colony Regional Vocation Technical School, uh, committee appointment. Uh, this is to reappoint, I'm sorry, I didn't write down the, Elaine, do you have the person that's looking to get reappointed?
Can't hear me. Uh, so this is not for an appointment, this is to get, um, three selectmen?
This is to join the appointing committee?
Right.
Right. Do we have members of the...
Mr. Chairman, if I do the math correctly, uh, there are three members of the board that are continuing on and two members that are not. So my suggestion would be that the three members of the board that are continuing on, uh, should comprise the committee.
Would you like to put that in the form of a motion?
Needless a motion, sir.
And I'll second it.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. All right, uh, let's see, the next item on the agenda, moving right along, is the, uh, Community Electricity Aggregation Program, update and possible vote. Sarah, would you like to update the board on that?
Sure, thanks Mark. Um, so first of all, just for, um, community out there that may not be familiar with this, um, back in 2014, our regional planning agency, Southeastern Regional Planning and Economic Development District, SERPAD, um, started what's called a Community Electricity Aggregation Program. And it, right now, it, it, it's, uh, made up of 23 cities and towns. Um, it's the largest electricity bulk purchasing program in the Commonwealth, which really blew me away, but listen to this, it's the second largest in the nation, if you don't count California, because they do things differently, of course. So, so, um, it's a pretty big deal. Um, this has been going on for a while. Um, and we, the, when we're on right now is a 35-month term. Um, when Ron was still Chair not too long ago, he asked me to be the, um, primary signatory for this because the bid period was coming up and, uh, Mr. Milonowski was not going to be here for that, at that point in time. And then he asked, uh, Mark, uh, to be the, um, the alternate. And so, um, what we have now is, we have a rate of, hang on. So right now we're with a company called Public Power LLC. And our rate, this is just for electricity supply, this is not for distribution. That would still remain ever-source or whoever your, um, energy person is their company. Uh, this, this rate is still effective going from September 2018 to January 2021. And it's 10, 10 cents, 10.430 cents per kilowatt hour. So that's compared with ever-source's basic service, which is 12.517 cents per kilowatt hour. So it doesn't sound like a big deal, but somebody could do the math. I think it's somewhere between 15 and 20% savings. So over time, that's, that's quite a big difference. Um, and that applies to both residential and small business. The thing about this particular thing is that they can't guarantee that at any point in time, the rate will be, will always be lower than ever-source because ever-source is allowed to change their rates every, every so often. So, so I think it's every six months for residences and three months for businesses. But what we can rely on is this will be a constant rate for, for 35 months. So, and generally, um, a supplier like ever-source does not, you know, lower their rates. So, so it's probably going to be a pretty big deal. So, um, so I attended all four of the Zoom meetings and then I thought, you know what? Mark really needs to be here. So he very graciously came to the, uh, to the remaining three. And we were both there for both the day when we had the, um, it was a bid training day to show us how to go through this. And then we were actually here for the big day, which was actually very tense. Um, I found it to be tense. So, um, we did get a very good rate. Um, and, but we, we decided amongst us to, that rate will take effect in January 2021. So to avoid confusion for people, I think we're, we're planning to announce the actual rate in November. But I can just say it's better than even now, what it is now. So that's, we were in agreement, I think we got a really good deal. And I guess one of the reasons I wanted to put this on is just to tell people what was going on. Um, and also, uh, I had a question as to whether we needed that, that Ron's, Ron's, um, kingly appointment of us to be ratified by the board or not. And Mark said, Rick, that you didn't seem to think that was necessary.
I didn't, I didn't think so, um, and I, I know it wasn't a voted subcommittee. And realistically, um, I'm not, I think to the extent that the, um, for the lack of a better word, the authority was vested in you Sarah to make that decision. I know from my own experience, you have literally minutes to make a decision. Um, so I, I don't, I don't believe that it takes a vote to ratify anything because I don't think we had, you had a subcommittee that was designated by the board specifically for that purpose. I also think to a great extent, um, you know, you, you made a decision that, that, like I say, it's not a decision that historically is made by a board or committee. So I don't think there's anything out of line whatsoever.
All right, so you don't feel there's any, uh, any vote that needs to be taken here?
No, I do not, Mr. Chairman.
I mean, Ron, Ron was just the one who told us that he... I mean, Ron, Ron was just the one who told us that he wanted, he asked me to do it, be the first, and, and Mark to be the alternate. And everyone sort of concurred, there was no vote, but, um, so I'm not talking about ratifying my, my, my bid, I'm talking about ratifying, uh, our appointment.
Appointment, that's right.
Right, and I don't think it was an, an appointment, so to speak, but.
Just got a little more color around what this is for people that may not understand it. If you look at your, at your electric bill, there is a supply section. And you, and if you're like the rest of us, you may get phone calls or, uh, mail solicitations all the time, offering you great deals. And sometimes they look really better, like seven cents or a six cents. Then you read the smart fine print, you find out that's good for three months or six months. And then you have the right to go up four cents or a nickel, uh, whenever they want. And if you want to get out, it's going to cost you $250 if you want to drop them. So there's all sorts of catches. Now, this is something that is an option for Carver residents. They, they, they can opt out of this, they don't have to participate. So all we're doing is using the SERPAD's regional, uh, buying capacity to obtain a lower supply rate for residents in the town of Carver that want to take advantage of it. So that, we're not committing any resident to have to do this. But they want, they'd be hard pressed to find anything that could be as competitive without some sort of hidden, uh, fine print that in the long run would cost them a lot more.
And, and I'm glad you brought that up, Ron, because actually during the bid day, uh, but the day before the bid day, I think it was, you correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, but I, someone mentioned an, an even lower price than when we got. And the fine print was that it started in the spring. And it didn't talk about next winter, so of course it's going to be lower, you know, because the costs tend to go up in, in the late fall and, and winter.
Yeah, I would, I think over the course of the aggregation, aggregation started to become popular. And I, you said around 2014, I think that's really when it started becoming popular, even though it's been on the books since the late 1990s. And I think over the course of any of these contracts, you'll see, uh, that the aggregate rate is always better than the alternative. Even, um, even though, as you mentioned, uh, you know, the utility end grid can, can change their pricing on a, right, right, a normal basis. Over the longer term, it's always more effective.
Yeah.
It was an interesting process, and it wasn't, you're right, Sarah, it was a little tense, I thought it was.
Yeah.
But it was an interesting process, and I think, um, I think it's a, it's a program that continues to benefit the town.
Oh, yes, definitely, definitely. And there's no opt-out fee, you don't have to pay the money to opt out, you can just opt out. And actually, if I can read that phone number for people who do want to opt out. It is 844-627-7232. So, there you go.
Thanks, Sarah, could you give that phone number one more time in case people-
Sure. And that's for-
Rick, just to, to double check, so we don't, you don't feel there's any, uh, any votes that need to be taken here at all?
Well, I don't think so, no, unless there was, unless you had a subcommittee that was specifically, uh, voted by the board, uh, to, to handle this. Um, I don't think you need any, any further action.
All right.
Mark?
Yes.
So I was looking at the April 15th, uh, meeting minutes, and it has in there that Sarah was, um, representing the town in the process, and Ron's going to be the alternate.
Oh, yeah, that's a, that's a correction I was going to make, it was more, it was, it was basically a typo, because it was supposed to be Mark.
Okay, so-
Alternate, I promise you.
So, I mean, in all actualities, you guys weren't a board, a committee, an authority. You weren't a subcommittee, um, you were representatives of us. So I don't, I don't think there was any way of, um, an open meeting law or anything like that would be in that, because nothing was formed.
Okay.
Agreed.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Moving along, uh, we have the SERPAD Regional Caucus, uh, possible appointment of Sarah Hewens to represent Carver. Uh, Sarah had asked me to put this on the agenda, and, um, so Sarah, why don't you update us here?
Yeah, I'll keep it quick, so, um, this is a SERPAD thing again. Now, the state has come up with a Rural Policy Advisory Committee. Um, that's a group mostly made up of, of other, other, um, regional planning agency staff. And unintentionally, they left out the 11 rural communities, uh, and their representation at that commission. And so this, this rural caucus that SERPAD started was an effort to correct that omission. And so the caucus meet, would meet and discuss issues surrounding rural communities. And then SERPAD would take that discussion to the hot, to the state commission, uh, the Rural Policy Advisory Commission. But that's how this whole thing started. I actually got, uh, an invitation from SERPAD in my, in my email, which was very nice. And basically what they're, what, we, I went to the first meeting already, but I, I didn't feel like I should proceed without a vote of the board, um, really asking me to represent the town. Basically, what this caucus is going to do is meet, um, quarterly and talk about issues that affect rural communities, that might not be affecting, um, larger cities and towns. And it, the, the one meeting I did go to was, it was very good, uh, we, it was a Zoom meeting. And what it's going to try to do is, is support implementation of the recommendations made in the Rural Policy Plan. And there's five focus areas, economy, community, uh, infrastructure, economy, community, governance, and resiliency. And, um, so all these issues were brought up at our first meeting. I think SERPAD didn't realize, obviously, none of us realized that some of our meetings were going to focus on this virus. So the communities are really addressing issues that we're dealing with, that maybe a larger, a larger, uh, popula- town of a larger population would not be dealing with, or would have different ways to deal with it. And rural communities are defined as, um, having a population density of 500 persons per square mile or less. So that gives you some sense of that. And another thing that the, um, the, the group is trying to do is encourage the equitable, equitable distribution of resources to meet our needs. Um, we're not, you know, a wealthy community. We've heard that state funding is going to, um, go down, and we're already hurting with that. I mean, that's just one, one of many topics that were, that were addressed. So I would, I would love, I would be honored to represent the town on that, if we so choose.
I'll make a motion that we approve, um, Sarah as our representative to SERPAD.
Second.
Discussion?
Well, it should be really for the SERPAD Rural Caucus, because-
All right, I'll change that to SERPAD Real, Rural Caucus.
Yeah.
Knocking again.
Okay, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, thanks very much.
Congratulations, Sarah.
Thank you.
Our next item is a, this, discussion on, uh, citizens' participation during Zoom meetings. This is something that I, I wanted to put on the agenda, um, and just get the sense of the board on. You know, my personal feeling is we, we've always had, or at least tried to have, citizens' participation. Since we've gone to these Zoom meetings, obviously the format is different, and, and it's been an adjustment. But I, I, I did speak to Rich Goulart, and Rich, if you're still there, feel free to, uh, to, to chime in. And, uh, he said, he did mention that we could, we could put a link out, uh, prior to the, to the meeting, when we post the agenda. People could go, join, could click on that link, he could put them in a, in a waiting room at the beginning of the meeting. And, um, and they could participate via Zoom, the same way they did in our, in our public meetings, uh, when they were in the selectmen's room. And I think citizens' participation is important, and I personally would like to see it going forward. And I just wanted to get the, the sense of the board.
I agree totally, Mark, I think that's a great idea. The public have a right to speak out, and let us know what's going on, and, um, I'm, I'm all in favor of it.
Mark, how would you, I mean, normally we try to hold people to three minutes apiece, no more than 10 minutes for the segment overall. Would, would you tell Rich just to take the first three people, or?
I think the guidelines would be the same. I, I guess, since we haven't had citizens' participation, participation, participation for a few meetings, that maybe the first one, if there were four or five people that wanted to participate, maybe we could make an exception at that time, just because we haven't had it for a few meetings. But I, I would like to try to keep the, the guidelines the same. It seems to me for most of our meetings, we haven't had, uh, a large number of people there. I guess we'd have to see how it, how it goes. I, I, I'd hate to see a situation where people rush to the computer to log in, and if you're not, you know, clicking on the link quick enough, you don't get in. So, uh, I think the first one would be, we'd have to see how it goes.
I, I mean, I guess, I mean, it doesn't affect Alan and I as much if, uh, the election's going to be as soon as it is. It's really, you know, you three are the ones that will be, my only concern would be, you could have 20 people sign up. Because it's easier to do it if you don't have to leave and go down to the town hall. You just have to sit at the computer to sign up.
You're exactly, you're exactly right. And I think if it became an issue where we, you know, had that kind of situation, then we, then we may have to, put, we may have to put a linen off, we may have to, you know, we have five people that want to speak, maybe we let them speak for two minutes instead of three. But I, I would just like to see a way for the public to participate. It might be something where we, going forward, we have to change the, the method by which we do it, or, or change some of the guidelines. But I think it's important for the public to have access and have us be able to participate in our meetings.
Right, I, I think the chairman's, I think it's the chairman prerogative, so that, uh, I'm, I'm fine with it if that's something you want to do.
Yeah, I think it's something I'd like to, I'd like to try, and like I said, we can always, we need to change the guidelines a little bit, then we can change the guidelines, so we're back in the selectmen's office. I mean, we really don't know the, the governor's current guidelines, and on September 8th, I'm sorry, May 18th. My next meeting is May 19th, so we could be back in the selectmen's office by then. I don't really think we're going to be, but we don't really know. So this may be for one meeting, it may be for a number, we, we just don't know. But I just, I'd like to find a way for the public to participate, that's all.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, I think, um, I, I agree that I think it would be really nice to be able to have the public participate. But I, I do know that since Area 58 is the, is hosting the meeting, that they could do, um, with, with the members of the, we, they could sort of conduct an orderly entrance of the members of the public, and, which would be very helpful, I think, to you as chair. And then, and they'll know who entered the waiting room first and second, and, you know, so that would probably be, um, you know, to let them be the ones to let them in, I guess, is what I'm suggesting.
They can, and, and that's what would happen, where they would come in one at a time, at the beginning of, of our meeting. The, the rich, or Area 58, would let them in one at a time, and they'd say their piece, and then they would, they would go away, and the next person would come in. So it'd be one at, we, we wouldn't see five people on the screen at the same time, it'd be one at a time. They'd be held in a, in a waiting room, just like we are when we get into the meetings, but it hasn't started yet. And, um, you know, I could talk to, I could talk to Rich and maybe give him some guidelines, depending on how many people want to participate, how much time they get. But, but I, I think it's important that people have, be able to participate. So if the board is in agreement, then I'm going to instruct Mr. Goulart that we're, we're going to try that for the next meeting.
Yeah, I think it's a wonderful idea, Mark, I think it's, uh, probably a little overdue, and definitely, you know, there may be some bugs and bumps along the way, but definitely worth doing.
Okay, so we'll, we'll try, any other, any other comments there?
No, I, I just agree, I think it, I agree.
All right, so we'll try that for our next, uh, meeting. So, going forward, uh, discussion and possible vote to acknowledge receipt of an open meeting law complaint relative to the notice of the board's April 10th, 2020 meeting, and possible vote to authorize Town Council to respond.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I know that you sent around the, uh, feedback from, uh, Town Council today for all of us to review.
I did.
And, uh, so that I would, I would make the motion that I move that the board vote to authorize Town Council to respond to the open meeting law complaints received by the board on April 13th and April 17th, 2020.
Uh, Mr. LaFon, do you think we need separate motions on each open meeting law complaint, or do you think one motion is adequate for, for both?
I would say one is adequate for both.
Okay, thank you.
A second.
Discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So both of these are all about us not posting within 48 hours, correct?
Correct.
And, I mean, did we really post within 48 hours, is the question? And, I mean, it's a simple yes or no. I mean, do we really need to go ahead and spend money for Town Council and just to turn around and say, hey, well, why can't we just respond, uh, to a means of saying, well, we posted at this time, we had our meeting this time, and uh, we made a mistake, we made a mistake, and move on? Just my opinion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think, I think, Bob, the issue is that, uh, we felt, we feel, I feel, we have a, a good legitimate reason why we had to call a meeting within that 48-hour period. You, you addressed it earlier, uh, in that we had, um, uh, you know, Mr. Milonowski was going to be leaving. So that, uh, you know, I'm comfortable that, um, you know, I, I, I would like, personally, I'd like to make sure that if we're going to be subject to the Attorney General reviewing the open meeting law complaint with a possible fine being at stake, that we probably defend the, uh-
Well, we can, we can defend it adequately enough, this, like I said earlier, all right? But do we really need to go to Town Council and, and say, hey, this is how we want to defend it? I mean, we were under the gun for a town administrator, um, because he was leaving. Uh, we needed someone to take over as an interim, all right? Uh, we followed a process, uh, that was there, uh, that we've followed in the past. And, um, the postings that we posted were due to necessity, uh, of an emergency standpoint of us having proper administration of our town, um, and not to have non-administrative within our town. So, uh, I think that we can turn around and do both at the same time. Defend ourselves, but also understand that it's not something we do every day, um, and that's where we're at, just my opinion.
Anyone else? I guess speaking for myself, and I, I agree with you, Bob, that I think we acted appropriately. But I, I also think that it's important that we, we, we have council respond, just so we make sure that response is, is appropriate, and, and going forward, if it's appealed, we have a response from Town Council on record. So I, I personally would like to see council respond.
Yeah, I, I, and I, I see where you, where you're coming from, Bob, but I, I agree with Mark. I am not a lawyer, and I feel that, um, this is something that really shouldn't take them that long, should be pretty straightforward. And then we'll have a document in case it gets appealed, and they won't wonder, well, why were these people just speaking for themselves? I, I think it's just a better, um, better policy.
Anyone else?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just something to, like, I guess it's accurate, the complaints received by the board on April 13th and April 17th. I guess I'll just reference that it's referring to meetings on, meetings that actually took place on April 10th and April 16th. So that, uh, just, just, the, the, the motion talks about when they were received, but meetings in question were the 10th and the 16th, just, just for clarity.
Okay, uh, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
I think, Alan, you did second it.
Okay.
Yes, I did.
Uh, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Four to one, thank you. Uh, let's see, so I guess that took care of both of those, so, uh, Town Administrator's update.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, first of all, I really want to thank everybody for, it's obviously nice to be here and have the opportunity to serve the town of Carver again, which sometimes I think I grew up in Carver, that's the way it feels. But I've been here, as you know, on kind of a part-time basis for a couple of weeks, and I've had the pleasure to meet a, many of the department heads, not all of them yet. Um, and had some pretty good in-depth conversations with them. As I said, there's, there's still several more, um, and beyond department heads. I, as you know, I've met with the members of the board. I've been able to, I put together so far, um, a list of the, those things that the members of the board pointed out to me as what you'd consider issues, concerns. Got to clean it up a little bit, but I, I think that ultimately will serve as a, um, a list of goals for, for me and others to pursue. So it was very valuable to be able to meet with all of you individually. Some of the things that obviously are important, timely, is this coming week, uh, net, early next week, I'll be meeting with, uh, financial teams, schools, uh, Meg and, and others to look at the stat, state of the state in terms of what budget models we, we may want to consider, if- if we do see some semblance of a reduction in state aid. At this point in time, I think most of us feel that it's almost inevitable that there'll be some reduction for FY 2021. Like, like, you know, my current experience, I think we're going forward with the current spending plan because how much we don't know, but ultimately I think we want, sooner rather than later, we want to start looking at different scenarios. So that's something that we'll be looking at starting this, this coming week. We mentioned furloughs earlier and I think, you know, specific to the Town Clerk's Office. Beyond that, we've had some internal conversation that several department heads have pointed out what they consider to be sufficient gaps right now in terms of their own ability to meet some of the legal requirements of their own office. So I think you'll see in the next coming week or two, we'll be looking to address some of those concerns. I believe there's approximately 25, 26 employees that are put out on some sort of furlough. We were at 50% or 100%. And sometimes when people aren't there, you get a better sense of, of who you want there. So, so far, it's learning experience with regard to that. And I think learning experience, experience for some of the department heads too. So we, yeah, so that's something we're keeping an eye on with regard to furloughs. One other thing that I'd like to point, I do think it's very timely and I thank Elaine for her initiative in putting together a group to start talking about a reopening plan for Town Services. Hopefully that'll be sooner rather than later. But she was able to convene a group of our public safety officials, building O and M, and getting into, you know, each individual to start, start that consideration. I know some towns are beginning to do that. So getting out a little bit ahead of that to determine, you know, what type of safety and other procedures and equipment might be suitable so that we can open as soon as possible to the public, even if it's on a limited basis. So that's, that's, that's obviously very timely. One other thing that I would just point out is that during my contract negotiations with Bob and Mark, they did bring up, you know, the issue or the, it's not an issue, but protocol for maybe dealing with Mr. Milonowski as a consultant. It was recommended to me by Bob and Mark that I tried to record those types of, you know, communication with, with Mike on issues. So that's, we haven't had that opportunity yet, but I do know that that was brought up by, by the chairman in terms of the best way to approach that. So I don't know if you want to provide any advice or at this point I can just go ahead. But, but to the extent that I can document that, obviously I need to be aware of any communication. So I, you know, like Town Council, it's easier for me to do that if it comes through my office, but I don't know what the board had envisioned. So I don't know that there's an issue or problem you have to solve, but that's, I just wanted to bring that up to you.
I mean, I don't think we, we certainly don't have an agenda item as a, a discussion of that. I would, I would think going forward, it would be a good idea for folks that want to have discussions with Mr. Milonowski to work through your office. If for no other reason that we can document the hours that Mr. Milonowski is putting in on the town's behalf. And if we have random people making phone calls, there's really no way to, to document that.
And I, I think that, that's, for me to work in in the direction that I think you and Bob gave me rather informally, but I think that would, that would be helpful. But I just want to bring it up to, so that we don't, so that we don't have any discussions later on about what, what we could have done, should have done, whatever the case is. So I don't believe there's a decision to be made at this time, but just to, just to put that in your heads at the moment. And anything else you want to comment on that? I just want to, one more point I'd like to make in general is that I do, I'm doing a lot of apologizing these days for my inability to talk to a lot of people that I feel are very important. Both as elected, appointed and other community leaders in this town who may not be in an elected or appointed capacity at the time. So I just hope people are patient with me because I, I truly believe people's input is important for me. So I can learn, get oriented and perhaps get different perspectives on things. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll call it quits tonight.
Mr. LaFawn, can I just ask you, is, is the town keeping track of, of, of any additional expenses due to COVID-19? Are we keeping a?
Yes.
Are we documenting, so we are documenting any extra expenses?
Correct. Yes. One of the things that I've spoken to Meg about too is that I know some communities are documenting expenses that are, you know, not just additional expenses, but it, expenses that are a result of the, the virus and the pandemic. For instance, there could be some, I think this isn't exactly the right comparison, but when you look at the lost productivity, for instance, from people that we have, that we've put out on furlough. And again, that's just one example of, you know, that's a cost in its own way, rather than just an additional cost of like equipment, et cetera. So looking to kind of document the entire picture of what it's costing versus just additional costs. I think there's a different way, there's different ways to look at that. But there's no question that each department through Meg is documenting their additional costs, whether it's a specifically additional personnel or specifically equipment. That is all being kept.
Anything else, Ms. LaFawn?
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman. My congratulations to you.
Thank you. All right. Moving along, minutes licensed topics, topics not reasonably anticipated by the chairman, 48 hours in advance. We have the minutes of April 10th, April 15th and April 16th.
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes of April 10th.
Is there a second?
Alan, your microphone is
Alan, you're muted.
Second.
Thank you.
So Yeah, I just, I just have a couple of small changes.
Okay.
In in the April 10th one, I think during the whole set of minutes, if we could change the, the word TA to interim TA, where, where we're actually discussing the interim TA position and/or Mr. LaFawn, I think that would be more clear. Because there's quite a bit of those minutes where we're actually talking about the interim, but we're calling it the TA. And this just goes to my earlier point. Causes a lot of confusion. So
I can understand the confusion. Comments on that? Anyone?
I'm waiting to amend my motion for the rest of Sarah's corrections.
So under, on page one, under the Huen's comment, I don't have them in front of me, but we're each making our remarks at some point on page one. And it's just a typo. It says, any members, that should be changed to many members. And then on page five, I don't, not sure what to do about this, but, but I asked the question about whether we had a discussion about the $500,000 in Conservation Land Trust money going going to petition the governor. And when I read this, I, I don't even remember petitioning the governor to do this. And so I asked, but in the minutes, and I do remember asking, so is this, is this keeping us from having to go to town meeting? Which of course, I think we should go to town meeting. This whole fund was established at town meeting and it seems to me that no one can change it except town meeting.
I'm looking for your specific spots there. I don't
Page, page five. It's, I think it's near the top. Huen's asked, does this, it's a one-line thing or two sentences, one line. It says, Huen's asked, will this keep us from going to town meeting? And then it says, and TA stated that is correct and it takes a two-thirds vote of town meeting. Now, I, I don't, I don't remember him saying that's correct. If I, if he had said it's correct, that is going to prevent us from going to town meeting, I would never have voted yes. So I'm hoping if we can look at that tape again, that it says he, he said, and it's going to take a two-thirds, that we will have to go to town meeting and it's going to take a two-thirds vote.
I just, I just don't recall the
My recollection was that we were going through the state so it could happen more quickly because we don't know if town meeting will happen until November at this point. So that was my understanding. But if we have to go to the tape, then I would make a motion then that we table these minutes until we can review that specific quote.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Okay.
That's it.
So, okay, we got to table all the minutes?
No, just that one.
Okay.
We'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April 15th.
Whoops.
Is there a second?
Can we just get a motion and a vote on 410?
I said, we need a motion to table?
Yeah. Second.
Make a motion to table the minutes of 410.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Okay, Mr. Clark, April 15th.
I had a motion to approve the minutes of April 15th.
And Mr. Dunham, did you second?
Oh, yeah.
Discussion?
Yes, if I may. So on page two, and I'm sorry, I don't know where exactly it is on page two, but it says, TA will continue to work on the town warrant until completion as the executive consultant. Is that really what we did? Are we allowing him out there now, our former TA, to work on the town warrant?
My, my understanding was he was going to work with the interim town administrator to complete the warrant.
If the town, if the interim town administrator needed his help.
Yeah, I think that was my understanding too, that we were going to allow him to, to work whatever capacity, you know, Mr. LaFawn felt necessary.
As long as Mr. LaFawn felt it was necessary. I remember that part of the discussion. This makes it sound like he's just going to be off there somewhere working on the town warrant. So I don't know how you want to amend this, but I think that should be made a little more clear.
I'll amend the motion that for that section, we add the phrasing that in, that, that that the executive consultant will work with the interim town administrator on completing the town warrant based under the with, with the under the request of the interim town administrator.
Okay, that's good. Yeah. Thank you. One, one last one is really minor. On page three, where it says Ron would be the alternate. That should be changed to Mark would be the alternate.
My motion reflects that as well.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
I'll second Ron's amended motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Yeah. Unanimous. April 16th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April 16th.
I'll second.
Discussion? Seeing none. All in favor of motion to approve?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Unanimous. All right, let's see. Executive session minutes of February 11th, February 25th and March 3rd, 2020 for approval and not for release.
I'll make a motion that we do so for the minutes of February 11th.
Is there a second?
You're just making a motion for one of them, Ron?
Yes, I just, I'm just going with, I'm taking them individually, just for the 11th.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I just, before I vote on these executive sessions, I just want to make sure and take a look at them before we go forward with anything.
Have you not seen them yet, Bob?
I'm not sure. I, I think I made some changes. I wanted to add into those. I'm not sure if they're done yet. So
Would you like to make a motion to table these to the next meeting?
I think a motion, we table these to the next meeting and I'll get in there and take a look.
I'll second.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Our next meeting is May 19th. And community announcements.
Actually, we have our next meeting Friday.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're correct. The next meeting is Friday, what is the date? Friday?
May 8th.
May 8th. Thank you. Friday, May 8th at 9:00 AM. Community announcements. Sarah?
I just want to continue to thank the public safety departments for all they're doing. But also all of our employees who are, you know, really under the gun during this time and, and and all of our residents. I know there's a lot of people suffering out there. So I just want you to know that we appreciate you no matter what.
Thank you. Mr. Belvin?
Yeah, just a couple of things. The first one is the waste district. I'd like to turn around, put that as a discussion point at the next meeting if I could. Just to let people know what's going on with that. But some issues, some people have contacted me saying that they are seeing some places that aren't following through with the COVID-19 face masking and social distancing. Please contact our town hall and our Board of Health. They can address those more than I can personally. I refer them back to them because that's their job. But I appreciate people getting in touch with me, letting me know and, and pointing them in the right direction. I do appreciate it very much. But I just want to say thank you very much to everyone out there. Keep, keep, keep an eye on everyone outside as the weather gets warmer. People are going to get out and walk around and keep your social distancing, please. We need to put a stop to this. There's too many people sick and unfortunately dying in our community. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Clark?
I have a couple of things. First, I just want to extend some credit and thanks to Area 58. They sort of really stepped up in the plate when we had to jump into these Zoom meetings. And they're not just doing it for us, they're doing it for other committees as well. Getting hold of that platform that can broadcast these live. It was, I think, an important part to help us keep meeting the terms and the spirit of what the governor requested of us. So just, I think Rich Goulart and his entire staff are doing a great job out there. Our contract with Comcast expired last October. They have been moving very slowly. Oh, it's not unusual for it to go past the expiration date. We, we have some, we're requesting some capital equipment money and they were going back and forth with them about how much is going to be available because it's so important. I mean, there's, with what we're into here and the kind of investment we have to make to buy a platform to be able to go live to keep up with the current technology, we rely on getting some capital grants out of our cable company. So that's been one of the delays. Now, of course, with COVID-19, they've almost put everything on stop. You know, they're not, they're not having meetings. So I'm not sure when it'll get done. But I will obviously contact the board when there's an agreement and bring it back to you. I will tell you, as I mentioned, I think before, that at the very least, we're probably going to come out of this with one high-definition television channel, which is hopefully where these meetings will be in the future. Because anybody that's tried to watch our meetings on Channel 15, it can be a painful experience. So that should clear a lot of that up. And then just in case people are not aware, with the CARES Act came out, there was money available for states and local government. And of all the counties in the state, Plymouth County is the only one that received a $90 million grant. Well, actually, I shouldn't say that. Bristol County and Norfolk County also received it. But they decided after consultation with the state to turn that, those monies back to the state for distribution. At this point in time, Plymouth County is intending to distribute the monies themselves within Plymouth County. And that's why I think it's important that we are tracking our COVID expenses because this money is specifically to offset additional costs to the community as a result of the COVID virus. So just so people are aware, now my understanding is there are still discussions going back and forth between the county and the state. And it may be that the county does not end up retaining the funds, but as of right now, I believe the funds are on deposit with the county. Other than that, I just wish everyone to stay safe. I know that we're all hitting fatigue and burnout from being quarantined and confined to our homes. And, but I think the reality that we've had a fatality in town should Uh, and uh, but I think um the reality that we've had a fatality in town should be a sobering thought for everybody. And as much as we're all going a little stir-crazy, uh, we're doing it for the right reasons. And the important thing is not just to keep ourselves safe, but realize that if we go out and act recklessly, we're endangering the lives of others. So please stay safe, uh, and hopefully this will be over uh sooner rather than later.
Mr. Dunham?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I've got a couple of things. Uh, first off, I would like to congratulate the newest members of the Carver Fire Department, uh, five individuals who went through the uh recruit class of twenty twenty. It's Jen Bartels, Sean Parkinson, Ben Montilla, Todd Sexton, and John Cabo. I'd like to welcome them and congratulate them on completing what is not an easy course. And along those lines, I'd like to thank the instructors, Deputy Chief Eric Germain, Assistant Deputy Chief Jesse Boyle, Captain Eric Weston, Captain um Bill Frohlich, Captain Robert Tollis, and Captain Frank Nye, Lieutenant Josh McDermott, Lieutenant Bob Mittendorf, Lieutenant Jeffrey Thomas, Lieutenant Sean Bogart, and Lieutenant Dan Wilcox, along with firefighter Matt Sears and Austin White uh and Assistant Dive Master John O'Connell. These gentlemen uh put in a tremendous amount of work to get these recruits up and running. They've now uh completed training as far as the school. They now have gone on to their stations uh for sixty days of station training. Um, so I wish them all luck uh during their training. Uh, I know all the stations have very good trainers, and um they've done a good job. So just wanted to welcome them aboard. And then on a final note, um, basically, you know, I I thank the town for and the citizens for realizing that, you know, we missed the election on April twenty-fifth. Um, you know, that's when my term ended. Uh, the only reason I'm still here is because uh by Governor Fiat, not because of any election by the residents of the town. And I think it's time to move on. My heart's not really in it, and I don't think that's fair to the board members, to the employees of the town, and most importantly, to the citizens. If I'm not able to give a hundred and ten percent, even for just between now and June sixth. So I am resigning effective four PM tomorrow. I'll be bringing my uh letter of resignation uh addressed to Mr. LaFond, Mr. Townsend, and Ms. Dale, and I'll be taking those to uh the selectman's office along with my key and my pass to get into the town all uh for tomorrow before four o'clock. And then uh Rick and Elaine, if you just pass those on to whoever else is going to need it. So I want to thank the town, the opportunity to serve them for the past six years. I'm proud of what we've accomplished, I think we've accomplished a lot. I want to thank the members of the current members of the board uh for all your hard work, and it's been a pleasure, but that's it.
Okay, um, well, on on that note, Mr. Dunham, I want to thank you for all your hard work um the last six-plus years on behalf of the town. Um, you've been a an integral part of so many things that have happened in this town and um, on behalf of the town, I just want to thank you for all your hard work. Um, we owe you a debt of gratitude. That, thank you, thank you. And um, just a couple of other quick things. Uh, the senior and veterans work-off programs are now accepting applications for FY twenty-one. Uh, applications can be found on the assessing department's page on the town website, along with the program guidelines, and are due back by May on by May thirty-first. Um, again, as so many others have done, I want to thank all our chiefs, our our Board of Health, our health agent, everyone in town that's working so hard, our town hall staff, everyone that's worked so hard to help us get through this this COVID nineteen dilemma. And we we will get through it and emerge stronger on the other side. And um, I guess that's it. Thank you, have a wonderful night.
Um, Mark, one one other thing, Mark, I'm sorry, um, but we didn't do one thing. And welcome, Rick, to the town of Carver.
Thanks a lot.
Absolutely, welcome, Rick.
Yep, I know my way around, and uh it's good to be back at my old office. And um, that's very, very nice of you, Bob, I appreciate that.
Yeah, thanks, Bob.
Have a wonderful night, everybody.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we adjourn.
Good idea, thank you, Mr. Dunham. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everyone.
We are adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.